To be part of their plan. There used to be a part of their district and they got rid of it.
Two minute warning. I did start the recording, so just beware. Yes. Beware. We're live. Fair enough to take it or not. That's fine. That one doesn't stand. All answered. To this. Moving on. Thank you, sir. Is. You're good. Is I'm thinking. Okay. Well, maybe not. They don't have. And not. He is. Semi, yeah. I assume if I. I'm talking to. Oh, there they come that way. I got. I think there's building that. Yeah. Yeah, he has many over warehouse or the software. But he can. Discuss. Um, was one of them. To say I would. Would wind up often. You know, it's a lot. Well, he called me and then he. So he was. Oh, she was. Alright. Yeah. I always pop the. He is our. Always. Yeah. It's hard sometimes to leave such a long. Well, I keep my attention. I think. My. I don't know. It's simple. Or then they're ready to play.
Ready, rock and roll?
Seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. First order of business is the plan to be. I pledge allegiance in the class. Of the United States of America. And to the republic with its stance. What? I'm. Think that it's all. With the urgency and justice for all. Welcome. Alright, next order is the consent agenda. Containing the minutes and the bill. And a class B for divine savior.
Motion approved consent agenda.
Are there any additional bills? Nope, okay. So I have a motion.
Oh, second.
And a second is consent agenda. Any questions? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I am opposed. Motion carried. Public comments. On anything that's not on the agenda. No public comments? Alright, I will move on. Report on operations of the village. I have a special mention. For. Let me get to it. Um, for Annie Stadler. Okay, it's the Parkville Nation honoring Annie Stadler for her outstanding service to the village of Pedonia. Whereas after forty-eight years in the banking industry, Annie Stadler has retired from Fort Washington State Bank. Annie Stadler contributed greatly to the success of Fort State Bank through her hard work and dedication to the bank as well as the community. Whereas very here at Fort Washington State Bank, Annie Stadler assisted the village of Pedonia with her with their many accounts at the Fort Washington State Bank. Whereas Annie Stadler was a liaison for the village for donations made to the village and the community. Whereas during her career for Washington State Bank, Annie Stadler also became well-known throughout the community due to her willingness to assist people. Therefore now be resolved that the village board of the village of Pedonia does hereby acknowledge with sincere appreciation and gratitude for the years of dedicated service that Annie Stadler has provided to the village of Pedonia and community. And the village board of the village and village staff of the village of Pedonia do hereby with any the very best on her retirement. And this fifteen day on December. So that's. I would be open for a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation here to Annie Stadler. Oh, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor? I. I am opposed. Motion carried unanimously. That's all I have. Village administrator.
Sure, so first off, I'm sure Director Paulson can share a little bit more, but we did find a candidate after some interviews for Public Works. So we could share more about that. We'll hopefully get that person up and running to start in January. Speaking of public work stuff, I took a drive with trustee Gerke, so thanks for that. And we explored some of the parks, learned more about your operations. My plan is once Eric gets situated in his position, I plan to, you know, walk through a little bit more with him and learn more about the operation from the back on the back end. Developers agreements closings continue to happen with the items that you guys have already approved within the industrial park. There's one or two still hanging out there that are just waiting on an engineering review. Well, once tonight happens and we have an engineer, then we can get those closed as well. Next up, we got the engineering RFP itself, went through that process and reviewed plans with trustee Long. So we'll tell you more about that very soon. I participated in the joint EMS discussion and as I reported last time, I was asked to draft that joint intergovernmental agreement. So that agreement has been drafted. It's now sent over for legal review. And then it'll come back before the January meeting of that EMS group. So we'll keep that moving along and then once that's finalized, we'll then go back to each of the municipalities for a discussion and approval as well. We finished up all the tax prep stuff, so that is good. Tax bills were sent out on Friday, December ninth. And then we've already seen an influx of people. Melissa can share with you, it's amazing how many people want to come in and pay their taxes right away. I'm just really excited to let go of that money. But it's a great time to connect with our residents, so that's been fun for me as well. I'm continuing to collect comp plan data. I still plan to bring the recommendations to you in January. And then finally, I sent out that invite for the Christmas party, so Wednesday, December twenty-eighth. This has now moved to the village fire station, just to the amount of people that we have. So please plan on attending. Let me know if you'd like to bring your family, bring your kids, bring a dish to pass, and we'll have a good old time. So that's my report. And then do you mind if I get into the end of your budget review? Definitely.
Oh, yeah, I think there's. We don't have a specific. You can do that under.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's on there. It's on the agenda. So if you look at this document that I passed out here, it looks like this. So I'll caution this with that these numbers are preliminary, they are unaudited. And when you think about the amount of staff that have from when this budget was created to now, it's at least gone through four different people's eyes. So all that being said, Melissa spent a lot of time helping to compile data and then I reviewed it today. So that we had at least a summary, at least an idea of kind of where we're ending at the end of the year. And all of the funds that you see here before you are within the general fund. So starting off with general government, you budgeted two seventy-four and we've spent two ninety-one. The extra spending were things like auditing. We did more auditing this year as we transitioned in new people. So there's a little bit of uptick there. You see village hall utilities, there's an uptick, that's for the digital sign purchase. And then you see a little bit of an increase in the municipal insurance under insurances. So that's what shows that about fifteen thousand dollar difference or increase in general government funds. Under public safety, we see savings in in wages and office expenses for the PD. I note here that the office is typically rolled over for the vehicle purchase. So those dollars are set off there and then wages. It's just obviously we have one more pay cycle of wages to get paid out. We'll still see a little bit of savings from all this budgeted. On the fire and EMS side, you'll see that these numbers, while the numbers that are entered are correct, Melissa and I don't think that they're entered in the right line items themselves. So that's something that we have to have to look at. So you'll see that there's an overage on the wage side from what was budgeted, but then you see there's a a under undercount for the utilities and supplies. So I'm guessing some of those numbers, right, are meant to be in the opposite categories. Because then when you add them up together, they do end up being about budgeted actives. So just beware of that. And inspection, we a little bit less spent in inspection. So overall, public safety is a savings of about thirty to forty thousand dollars. Under public works, we have our wages. We saw a little bit of uptick there. And then supplies, we see again savings of about thirty thousand dollars. So rolled together, public works is we budgeted three fifty-four, we've spent three thirty, so there's a little bit of savings there. Under parks and forestry, you see that we budgeted higher for our wages. So we're we spent a little bit less there. And then in forestry supplies, you see that there's an uptick there. I put fun before the fourth event. If I understand that you guys collected donations for that event. But then those those donations had to be expensed at that same line item. So you can kind of pretend that that ten thousand dollar difference isn't really there. It's just a way for us to reflect those donations. So in all parks and forestry ended up being about equal. And then economic development, again, you guys budgeted more development and stuff to happen. So we saw a decent amount of savings there of about thirteen thousand. And then finally, capital projects, you did do some capital products or set aside money for those capital projects. You had budgeted one forty-one, you spent or allocated one twenty-two. So when you roll that up together, you budgeted about one point two million in the general fund and you've spent about one point one, one point two. So there's a savings or a difference of eighty-four thousand dollars that have yet to be actually allocated. So as we touched on in past budget discussions, we knew that we were going to be pretty good at the end of the year. Obviously, not not filling Roger's position and then other capital stuff that just didn't end up happening. We knew there's to be some amount of savings. So you could feel comforted to know that there truly is going to be some amount of savings at the end of this year that rolls into reserves. And then we can decide what to do with at a later date. I think that's it. Do you have any questions between Melissa and I? We try to answer.
You. Let's see, utilities. Person of the digital sign.
Yep.
I believe that the town paid for half of that.
Yep, that's that's remarkable there, yep. That includes all utilities. So right now, if like if you look at our current budget actuals, it shows that we paid the bulk of those utilities. So Melissa still needs to invoice that out to the town.
Hopefully, we won't have eighty-four thousand dollars. There's no calling.
I sure hope that.
So we're prepared, sir.
Yep. And I, overall, it's a good position to be at and the year. So you guys should feel pretty confident about that.
Alright, anything else from your report?
No question.
Alright, we will move next to George Marshall.
I just got a few questions on place to move. Regardless of the report. Retired. Awesome. After the birthday year. Part of my plan to leave for the Bible and to the candidates to be able to take over. Now I'm gonna make off reviews and start. I don't cost any extra money, but it'll be a still interview running out of all. And again, when I go, you'll know that I can personally.
Talk you into five.
So if we could touch maybe on your letter quick. So we did have a meeting with the fire chief about their plans for the hundred year celebration.
Oh, good.
And so we have that in the works. The marshal was there too. I think we found a compromise on what a parade would look like, what the route would look like and what what resources we need. Because to the marshal's point, we alone cannot conduct a parade safely within our organization. But if we reach out to other municipalities, the sheriff's department, things like that, we feel confident that that we could do that. So just know that that plan is in motion. And I plan on after every department has signed off on that, then we'll have a presentation to you guys what that looks like probably in in January.
Along those lines, we talked, yeah, I'll have a map. Did we?
Great.
Into a really great. Where we're signing the. There is very.
Awesome.
Alright, that's that's good. At the last party meeting, we had it in conjunction with a meeting with the department. And there are great guns to have just prayed and now we're gonna have a parade and this and that. And I kind of recorded a little bit and I told him that some of the things that you just mentioned. So I am glad that you were able to stop in and buttress my comments and and get some reality hooked into that situation.
It was fine. To be honest, they absolutely must have the freedom that they'll figure it work. And that I consider it a big.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Alright, anything else? Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eric. Alright, next we have. Fire chief. We only have fire chief. Alright, we'll pass it up. Health worker director.
Also in my report. I sort of agree this morning for a little small. And same offer to. For personally. That's it.
Have you heard back yet?
I didn't.
Okay. Sounds good. And we'll keep them under wraps until till we know. Sounds good.
Alright, are there any questions on any part of this report? I included. When Roger was here way back, I had asked him to include the water pump and and water meters and whatever that that particular report, that was my request of Roger. So that we could keep track and identify and be aware of the. The unaccounted for water. And as it has to do with the project that we're. Biggest street project, we're we're going to do first all of the laterals that needed and line them and this and that. Get rid of the. There as much as we can. It's my thought that at some point in the future, the DNR is going to demand that municipalities do something like that anyhow. And if everybody has to get those contractors to do that, but at the same time, they're going to be paying a million dollars. So that was an initiative that that I started. A lot of times doing a street job, twenty or thirty of them and the village will bankroll some and put it on the taxes to be paid off in three years or something. So we didn't want to do too many at a time so that the village could also afford to accommodate them. So. That's what that particular thing is there.
Eric, do you mind sharing about the well upgrade? And the good news?
Oh. We might have. A hole just go all the way around them. So they figure that the reservoir has to be pumping over here at capacity. So and buried for bad on the pump. So everything's being rebuilt. It will be have the installed by Christmas. And they have it set and the well pump does five hundred gallons a minute is boost a pump will do five hundred. He's figuring that was less than three hundred before.
Yeah, at the study, the strand study had that somewhere in the like the low three hundred, three twenty-five or something like that. At that time, that was. I'm surprised they came out in one piece. At the bottom, then drop off the sixty more. Yeah.
Other than that. It probably will be next week with the temperature dropping, but we're going to drain all the rest of the water and throw inside inspected, clean it down and be ready for usage.
And I'll just add the good news, it was again, you guys estimated or you approved forty thousand for it and then ended up coming in maybe half that, right?
And it's just.
Yep, so.
And that's rebuilding.
Yeah, so great.
Five hundred for the well and five fifteen for the reason.
So we still have one more to go. Ultimately.
One. Which. This pump was over twenty years old. The pump we dug it, so. It was not.
Yeah, but I think the last one is under capacity as well, right? It's not pumping what it should be. So we should look at that moving forward in front of us, not that we could have an emergency.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Any questions? Alright, thank you. We'll move on to put treasury report.
Alright.
It was correct. The people who called to say, I haven't got my test really yet.
Alright, any questions? Did you have something on that? Alright, we will move to. County supervisors report.
Okay, the only thing I have to report is obviously a lot of people are giving their tax bill and happened to notice that the county tax is one up seven percent. When I was under understanding that we were, it was only about three percent. So I started doing some digging on that today. And found out that the reason it's going up seven percent is because at the end of this year in October, we decided to take on. Meckwan had a hard time staffing third shift dispatchers. So the city signed off on for the county worked with the city of Meckwan and the Southern Ozaki Fire Department to absorb that into the county. So that is all under the county now, which costed about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that got levied. So that's why the tax is doubled over right around four percent. So that's why you see a seven percent increase instead of the initial three percent that we thought it was going to be, so.
So all the dispatchers now are coming out of the county?
All of them except Cedarburg.
Sure, they're happy about that.
Yeah, so. So yes, but Meckwan and pretty much all the side of the county now.
Alright, anything else? Any questions? Thank you very much. Report on planning commission. Planning commission had. The Dollar General before us and they went through a number of different things. We had the planning. The public hearing. And. Yeah, Village Green. Village Green came before us and. Paul Appleback came to represent those as an engineer. And we looked over the. We looked over the subdivision plans and the developers agreements and. The letter of credit. We made a few adjustments and changed some language here and there. And that's to the point where we figured that it was appropriate as to what we needed. And then we can discuss some of that more specifically when we get to the points. And then we had. Did something else?
A little. Created lots, one and one last thing.
Oh, yeah, well, then we can talk about two of them. But the planning commission approved all three of those measures with the with the changes. So any questions on that before we get to the motions? Alright, and then we'll move to items for discussion and action. First. Item is more to approve the variance to the village of Pedonia Dory Court. Permitting to request on Dollar Dollar General to reduce the number of parking spaces and their size. Oh, okay. So then there are.
There is no action that is very important.
Yeah. Oh, okay. That's good, we're racing through this. Okay, more to prove final plan for village green subdivision number two. Do we have our? Did Paul show up yet? No. He said he was going to be here to answer questions. The one of the contingent points. Where the subdivision was, we had, we took issue with the. Taking for granted that we were going to transfer the property now on one that's village owns for a dollar. And we ended up changing that language. I'm changing it again. We ended up changing that language. To be for price to be determined in the future. That was in the in the minutes. That's in the minutes. Do you want to know that specific language that was in the minute? They won't be able to develop any of those lots. That was like eighty to eighty-five. And at least then they won't be able to develop any of those lots until they come up with a new subdivision agreement for that particular part of the development. And we'll work out all those details. And costs. At that time. So after that is all figured out and agreed to and signed by both parties, then they will be able to use that property to. To build lots eighty to eighty-four.
Good question then.
Wow, I just didn't know how much money was involved to start that dollar. I mean, to be determined later means what?
It means that they have to pay as much for it as we think is reasonable. In order for them to be able to buy our property, basically.
Don't have to come back and make an offer.
Yeah. Make an offer and then there'll be, you know, a bargaining or whatever until we come to an agreement on the on that cost. The value of the property that that will go. What else was in that first one?
Well, right now, you're just on the final plan. You're still on item B, which is just the final plan.
Yeah.
I'll just point out that the final plat we've seen. It's just the layout of lots. I mean, that's what it is, right? I mean, so they've already done all the engineering work. They went through trio and paid the money to get the final plat. Done. Personally, I don't see an issue with. The way they have lots laid out.
Yeah, we had a discussion about land. But we had a discussion about that also when we were looking at it last time a few months back and it was. But the planning commission recommended that with the the changes that. Wearing of the value of hold on one. That they were going to recommend that those are true.
I'm guessing the ex-dow lots are the ones that they want or they they say can be developed right now?
The there should be nine of them.
I would just point out that lot sixty has a thirty foot. High pile of soil on it, so that one I'm sure will not be developed.
That's the one that they they say that they need a restation to make that.
The way he presented this is if they can build and get approval of the whole. Lot structure, then they can build a few of them and sell the rest of. The rest of the property bought by another developer. And if the other developer sees it as already approved as far as the lot size goes, they may go for it instead of just having an empty field. So that's the angle they're working on. And they're only asking to approve a few lots right now that are closer to the resistance streets with infrastructure in them.
Those are the ones that the developer's agreement is referencing, correct? Anything else that they'd want to do in the future would have to be brought back before us to another developer's agreement.
Sure, there's really nothing that we have. There is no surprises in doing this. Everything is covered. No, it's not true specifically. Needs to be brought back to us and. And hashed out. And needs our approval before they can start doing something.
So I know we're doing this a little bit backwards again. Are you looking for a motion for approval? I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, I have more. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a fourth, motion carried. Okay, first subdivision agreement for Village Green subdivision addition two was changes in language. That's more specifically replacing. Um, the dollar where the price being determined that later date. Um, how did he explain that? When he was talking about he's limited to being able to uh. Work on those eighty to eighty-four or eighty-five. He, he had a way of explaining that though. He couldn't, it would be like another addition. Addition to addition two, that would be addition three. And he would have to go through this whole process and have all that approved. Before we would say yes and then they could build um, that and a bunch of houses, so. I really don't think that we would sell that property for a dollar, so that's why we made that a plan. So, um, we would be in order to make a motion. To approve the subdivision agreement for Village Green addition number two. Well, these are your, you two, they're two.
Yeah, I, I, I put in three drawings. The first two show Outlet. One. And this is by Emerald Hill Drive where it ends on the northeast end. And that's. Semi-buildable. Goes up and down. And that's five acres and they wanna trade that. That's Village Home. The next drawing is the proposed Outlet Nine. And it's forty-two feet wide and fifteen hundred feet long. And it's a big hill that goes up and down and up and down and they wanna give that to us for a park. On the, on the north side of that is land that Centriated is on.
It's at forty-two feet wide?
Yeah. It's out, proposed as a walking trail. And then there is a, what would be a buildable lot on the east end. But it just seems like a park. That would take a lot of maintenance. And maybe not use a lot because way up at the north end, it's just a, I don't feel it's a good deal.
They don't, they suggested that would be a market trend.
Yeah, well.
Right then.
So what are they proposing to do?
They, Outlet Nine, they want, they wanna trade our Outlet One for their Outlet Nine. Their Outlet Nine is forty-two feet wide and fifteen hundred feet long. It goes up and down hill with the bigger top.
Where's Outlet One?
Lot One is at the end of Emerald Drive on the east end.
Yeah, it's a picture of them.
Oh, and that's the one that was supposed to be a park?
Great, that's Village on crap, Village on crap.
Now that needs some development to build houses on it too. But.
That, wasn't that the same thing that they wanted to sell out to us for a dollar?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now they wanna trade us?
Well, either case, doesn't seem like, why, why, why do we want a one point eight acre? Lot that's forty-two feet wide?
Well, they wanted that as part of their tour, part of their park donation.
Yeah, well.
As the subdivision itself owns two hundred acres to the village as part of the subdivision to satisfy the park.
Right, well, where's the right?
So this, this is something that they would be giving us.
Yeah.
Along with enough other land to make their minimum park donation.
Okay.
So I'm not sure trading it would be a good, general, good way to describe it.
Okay, where's their other lot though? I want somebody to show me the other parks.
And I, I would argue, what are we getting for those five acres? You guys already, you just voted to not be okay with the, with a dollar per acre, but you're gonna give away five acres of developing?
Well, no, we're going to get a price.
Are you?
When they come, well, if they wanna build something, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna have to buy it.
But to John's point, isn't that part of this agreement that, or no, it's not?
No, that came out, uh, the note.
So this is in addition to, is that what you're saying? Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's detailed in the minutes of the, in uh, Melissa's minutes in the meeting.
Alright, got it, thank you.
Okay, just, just so that I'm clear right now. Our motion that we're, that we would look for would be to approve the subdivision agreement for Village Green. With the change in the language to paragraph seven, just replacing the dollar with the price to be determined at a later date. So, just again for my clarification, what does this Outlet One and Nine have to do with any of that?
Um, the Outlet One was incorporated in the first one. They wanted to turn that road up along to the two flecks on the Meritus part.
Okay, is this part of the subdivision's agreement?
That's, that's all out of this, right? The school property and this and that, that's, all those agreements are, are off the, the board. Um, what they wanna do is rather than doing a bunch of. Uh, messing around and more engineering to get uh, their property done, they wanna sell it as is. Um, hopefully. Hope that the lots, lots seventy-one to seventy-nine, seventy-eight? Yeah, seventy-one to seventy-eight across the top were lots that went east to west and they changed them to go north and south. They, it's, they terminated the two s- um, streets. That were going north.
Right, I get that.
Yeah, when are those, yeah, they terminated those. They were supposed to run up into the other group and on the uh, uh, century acre property. Now, if. They wanna sell the, those that grew up houses weren't lots that they wanted to develop. Those were out to the south. Now, if they would sell this to another developer. I'm hoping that another developer would be doing the rest of this in conjunction with the uh, century acre portion. And turn these lots back to where they were approved before, continue those streets and have more lots and no more lot.
But we just, we just approved a plat, creating those lots. So now we're hoping that they're gonna sell so that we can not do those lots? That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, they're out, they're already designed and they were approved. Before this was superseded.
Okay, but now it is superseded, so my question is. I'm, I'm just looking through the developer's agreement, which is what we would be approving in this motion. And I don't see any of this stuff about. An Outlet Nine being traded for what?
Right, yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, I don't understand what this has to do with a motion with, I'm not, again, John, I, I just don't understand what these drawings have to do with. The motion that we're looking for right now through developer's agreement.
Subdividers agreement.
Right.
Okay, well, on the, uh, our, at page twenty-one, I'm sorry, run along. I'm looking at the planning.
In here.
I'm looking at the planning commission. Package, maybe.
Then he makes that deal and he, I mean, he ends up with that acreage also from the village and a forty-two foot wide belt range. You know, that we did for a park. It seems like he's just buying time to sell it to somebody else.
Right, but I'm just saying. All I'm saying is I don't see it in here. I don't see it in the developer's agreement. I mean, I see the thing for a dollar, which we're changing to a price to be determined at a later date. I just don't understand what this. Outlet Nine and Outlet One and all this stuff has to do with, with this specific motion. That's all I'm saying. I just don't understand.
Yeah.
And the Outlet Nine is something that, that John had brought up.
Yeah.
That we discussed and that, but they're, they're planning it just as it is. Right now.
Right.
I've drawn it. What they wanna do is this, this will be part of a finished plat that's approved.
So that's, to your point, trustee Gerke, that's why I was confused too. If it's not germane to the proposal that's before you, then it doesn't really warrant discussion tonight.
Yeah.
I would agree with you.
And Outlet One is the village on property.
I agree with it, with what you're saying. I just don't know that's.
Yeah, that's, that's, I mean.
At the planning commission meeting. We had a subdivision agreement. That is not in the packet for the village board meeting.
Yeah, it's in there.
And that's where it says it and that's where it was very important. I think that was supposed to probably been in this package. No, not the mark up.
Planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, it starts on page thirty-four of our package.
Yeah, after the maps.
There's the final, there's the final graph form is in the package, the mark up form.
Yeah, but the minutes from the planning commission are. In an email to us, that's in a separate. Are they in the package or?
Okay, and then it, it is on page thirty-four. They talked about Outlet One and Nine. For Outlet One.
Yeah, but that, there wasn't any changes that we. Were looking at. For this particular subdivision agreement. The only change was the dollar to, that's the only change. What I was talking about and what, what you're agreeing with, Dan, I think, is that to make that adjustment for a future plat would give you probably fortified more lots.
Possibly, but I'm just saying that as of this point, it's a moot, it's a moot point. We just approved another plat, so it's kinda one of those where it's like, let's just move on with the business at hand and whatever happens, happens.
Yeah, it'd be, I would like to get a nice little package tied up with a ribbon for him so he has a good product to sell. We know there's a very. Uh, hopefully one that has enough dollars that they can actually do something like that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the subdivision's agreement uh, with the change in the language in paragraph seven to replacing a dollar with a price to be determined at a later date.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a fourth. Motion carried. Um, now we have a motion for a letter of credit. To be confirmed and arranged by a attorney to his satisfaction.
So what's in your package? Just the dollar amount that he wants to do? I asked him for a meeting, a full letter of credit and he said he would not buy that until the dollar and he just replied. He's looking for a most improved letter of credit of after the attorney's review. That was the nature. It's gonna be a basic bank letter of, um, I think all of them.
All those two things.
So did we get those numbers? When, didn't we have engineering done for that piece of sidewalk line along Milwaukee Street? That's a Roger question. It was like five thousand dollars or something like that for engineering. For the sidewalk there. I don't know if that was the Market Street one or if that was the one that's uh. That was the one that was by lot sixty-one and sixty-two, future lot sixty-two. Yeah, that one, that one that was built that had the street in front of it then. And we did engineering for that, right? We hired uh.
I believe Trio did the engineering and there were, uh, yeah.
So that's, that's not what this is talking about. This is talking about, or, I know that, that is what this is talking about. It would be the sidewalks and, uh. There's no, the road and the curb.
I was gonna say, I feel like this would be the extension of Milwaukee Street and Glendale Street if I'm not mistaken.
Right, for the, for the few houses that he wants to build, this is the letter of credit for the street and an other infrastructure that would have to go in front of those houses.
As well as the houses that are already there. But this isn't really a letter of credit.
He wants the dollar amount, please, so he can get that. So the dollar amount is a different approval of seventy thousand for the one.
So he's saying he can do the road and the curb for. For the quoted price of sixty-four to. And then building at ten percent contingency for the total of seventy thousand six hundred.
Which I believe Paul had said that was a number that he got from McQuinn this year or something in Brookfield for this year.
That's what it said up here, based on Brookfield, actually.
So we don't have an engineered unit price cost estimate? An engineer, an engineer's square foot or cubic feet or whatever? Well, TJ has done an estimate from another.
It's a unit price.
It's, it's not laid out very well, but it is.
Yeah.
So what was he questioning? That he needed a price?
He wants approval of the seventy thousand six hundred and one to be the dollar amount in the letter of credit to cover the road and curb.
I thought that was obvious.
That planning commission would be good, but not awarded.
Yeah.
And then when he gets approval for that number, he'll get the actual letter of credit then to us while the attorney's reviewing, it'll be approved.
Right.
Assuming everything's in place.
Right, that's, and that's what we, that's what we're into then, right? So the dollar, I thought you would, would mention that he needed another dollar amount, okay. No, it's a seven.
Just saw it, he just wants to go to the, the bank with one number at one time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything he needs is on here as part of units.
Who's needed approval for seventy thousand six hundred?
I'll make the mo, I'll make that motion a second.
Okay, approve the developer's agreement contention on attorney satisfaction and so on. That's how they go with the attorney and attorney fills this in and add them.
Just part of the motion.
Yeah. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, a fourth, and we can carry. All right, now we have a motion to approve Strand Engineering as Village's consulting engineer.
So, uh, the bill was sent out RFP on eleven fourteen to nine engineering firms. Uh, for the purposes of dedicating, uh, getting a dedicated engineering firm for the village itself. Uh, five of those firms replied back with proposals by the deadline. Three of them made um, an effort to outreach with their office and ask questions and introduce themselves. Um, after the deadline, trustee Long and I sat down and reviewed the proposals. Um, and we concluded that Strand Associates would be our recommendation to the board of trustees. Um, so we have a representative from Strand here, this is Isaac. Hi Isaac, I think he came before us once, once before. Um, we sent out his, their full proposal in your agenda packets. Um, hopefully you've been able to peruse it. There's a lot of fluff in there, but you know, we won't. Heard about that. Uh, but when you get down to the bare bones, really you're looking at what in their pack, and I believe is page one of their proposed fee schedule. Um, so it's a breakdown of each of the individual engineers and their hourly billing rate. So I handed out a copy, which I believe I emailed to you guys too, of the agreement that we'd be signing with them.
Is it a summary?
Correct, this is what.
Another agreement, okay.
Yeah, so this is the, this is their task order that we're gonna sign off on tonight. Um, so again, they have ranges in there too, but the ranges that we looked at as a, as a small committee are the ones that are in their packet. You see Isaac himself is here at a billing grade of like one, one twenty-two, for example. So what this means is that as projects go before them, they're gonna be billed at that hourly rate. So rather than a lump contract amount, rather than a monthly amount, it's truly as we need them, that's how they're gonna get billed. Um, Isaac can address in the letter here, there's under compensation, there's an estimated cost of thirty K per year. Um, I did push him a little bit on maybe not having that in there because it's hard to say how much we're gonna spend in a year, so he can, he can address that. Um, but overall, how we would expense for these things, if things are threefold, so if it's projects within the TID, the TID pays for it, right? Comes out of the expenses of operating that district. Um, uh, many of our uh, costs are gonna come from utilities, right? So you have the line item for utility maintenance and things like that, that would help upon those. And then finally, um, Strand's gonna assist us with creating a new fee, fee schedule. So that way, let's, for example, somebody were to come and apply and they were submitting a plat for review. Part of their permitting fee will cover the costs of Isaac and his team to review that, that survey. So really at the end, that there's very little direct cost to our general fund, it's all getting dispersed to. So really, at the end, there's very little direct cost to our general fund. It's all getting dispersed through those funds, as I said. Um, so I think that's enough for me. I'll let Isaac introduce himself and Strand, and you can touch on some items that I talked about.
Sure. I don't know if y'all remember me, but I stopped by, and so I missed seeing again. Um, I think Chris gave a lovely summary of everything that I was mentioning, but, um, regarding the thirty thousand dollars, I did wanna kind of clarify why I'm preferring to do that, um, in a password set for on all services. So it is an estimated fee, so like Chris alluded to, you know, if you guys don't operate this for any work, you're in charge of everything. Um, it's also not, we'd like to clarify, a do not exceed amount. But it's, we typically put in there as kind of a checkpoint to try to be transparent with the village. So that you guys are aware of, I guess, how much we are for the building, for what they offer us to do, and just to be engaged. So at any point throughout the year, we approach that number. We reach out to Chris and for, I mean, I'd prefer to do it and just make sure that everybody's still comfortable with the services that we're providing. So that we actually have a written notification to proceed with the new building with the authorized. Um, that doesn't necessarily have to be an amendment, but it could be, um, you know, something to just develop, proving that we proceed with whatever you guys have asked and allow with, um, with these vision, I guess, from our, I wouldn't say it would, but the effort is a point being that, um, it can be put in there and try to be transparent with you guys. Yeah, and that, Chris said, um, you know, we'd be based on an hourly wage rate, you know, whatever that keeps working on, it's, uh, which is gonna be primarily myself, but we, we've been, we've been, we've been locked out, it's, I'll be, I'll be filling in those specialty services if needed, um. Yeah, it's nice to see y'all again. I appreciate you having me.
Um, maybe Trustee Long could share a little bit more about our review process, but we, we ended up with, I think it was three, um, firms that we had as our, as our finalists. Um, Strand really impressed us, at least depressed me with, um, their diligence. Uh, they wanted to meet with me, they asked good questions, we had a good conversation back and forth with him and his partner. Um, so just building that rapport right away, I'm confident in our line of communication, which is definitely gonna be key. Um, and then just the amount of services they can provide. I mean, we really are looking for a company that can be that all-in-one service for us. We don't have to wanna go out for bids, of course, for, um, you know, specific projects or things like that. We feel confident that Strand's able to do, provide everything that we need, um, for the village's operation. So, um, Trustee Long, do you wanna add any comments?
Yes, um, about nine years ago, we went through the same process. And at that time, there was four engineers on the board and we were in a project, and we reviewed this very thoroughly. And we picked Strand at that time. Uh, I'm actually using the reference in there, I'm sure, which I probably, uh, I remember saying that a few years ago, but I'm there. Um, right now, there's a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars extended erosion design that they've got for the wastewater plant. Now, some of you guys may remember in the last phase of the project, their estimated cost of the project was lower than the bits came in. So they didn't go over, the project didn't go over budget, it just, the estimate was lower than the contractor said. The project itself came in under the bid price because of change that they did. Fun, make sure everybody, they did okay.
Yep, so that's it. We're just looking for a motion to, um, go into contract with them, and we look forward to working with Strand.
Make, make a motion to approve the contract, I suppose.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Um, any questions on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're probably aboard your train. Okay, then, uh, we have a motion to approve an additional thirty-seven forty for the purchase of the, uh, F three fifty truck from the auction.
So as I explained in my memo, uh, this is my fault. I mistook the one motion for the other motion. Luckily, we saved twenty thousand dollars on a well pump, so hopefully it's a win-win for us too. Uh, but I connected with Eric, um, the day that the, uh, bid was due. Uh, we talked back and forth right up to the deadline, um, and got it, got it approved. So the actual purchase price for the truck is the forty thousand five hundred that you see, and then the additional fees are really what brought us over by that three thousand amount. Um, after realizing the mistake, so thank you, Trustee Gerke, for giving me a call. Uh, I did reach out to your finance chair to say, hey, are you good with this? Because otherwise, you know, we could have, uh, talked about next plans. Uh, but anyway, we still feel very confident. The truck is here, it's very nice, right? You feel confident about the purchase regardless and.
I even put the battery in, that was the original batteries, or, I think I just tell Thomas that they've got here, here on that stock, so, Saturday night.
So we're gonna buy another battery, or just one.
Yeah. So anyway, just to clarify our bookkeeping, we're just looking for approval of that difference.
So were both motions forty thousand dollars?
What's that?
Weren't both motions, the one for the pumps approval?
Yeah.
And the truck forty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's why it's coming back for you.
So how did I get mistaken?
The, where you talk about one of them being not to exceed and the other one was gonna get brought back before you? So I thought that this one was the one that was gonna get brought back before you. You had talked about the well pump getting brought back if the cost increased. So that's, that's why, when they called about the forty thousand dollar amount.
So I guess I'm a little confused when we set limits on stuff, isn't that the limit? Right, at the end of the day?
Yep.
That's what it is?
Yeah, the other, the well pump was, we expected it, it might come in more than that. You sure that wasn't the one that we said it was gonna bring back to us? You know, that, that was that we had to do that no matter what. So then we didn't have to bring it back to us, it was not to.
Well, the well pump would have gotten brought back. You, you said you wanted to do it, but if it was gonna be higher amount, we wanted it brought back to confirm that amount. So that's what I thought this truck was, and I thought the other one was not to exceed the forty K.
Okay.
So again, that's, it's, it's my fault. I, that's why I called people after we realized the mistake and.
We'll have to be more clear about that one, we.
Yep.
In, in the minutes and whatever, to make sure, okay. Um, yeah, generally, that's what we would do. This is what amounts to be, well, how many miles is on that truck? Like forty, forty grand or something like that?
Forty seven thousand.
Forty seven thousand? And that's, uh, with the, and, and the whole deal. If we wanted to buy a new one, we'd have to wait a year or two to get one through everything. And so we figured in, and this is in good enough shape that we would go, and we figured that forty thousand would, would do it.
To Bill's point, I think I just wanna point out too that again, these limits are set for a reason and, and going forward, we just need to be very careful with what we do. We've been spending a lot of money lately. Um, and I think it's important that, and I, and I know that we've reiterated that point already, but it's important that we're being careful with what we're doing and which is again, why I ended up calling him right away, saying, hey, what's going on?
Yep.
So.
Agreed.
So I think it would be, um, advisable in the future, and I think we may have done this with a purchase at one time a while ago, as if we've set out not to exceed. And if something might exceed, have the board, um, designate a person or two to consult with if it goes over. And they would have the authority to concur or stay well known to get it, that type of thing.
Well, I think.
To tie that up a little.
Right, and I think that where it came down to being confusing was there were two motions each for forty thousand, that went in the same dollar amount. So I get the confusion on it. I'm just saying, that's, you know, regardless of what, what the different motions were, that's our job, is to make sure that we're being careful with those things. So we have to be very careful moving forward.
Right. Yeah.
But, at this point, wherever we are.
So then what we, uh, what we're looking for, if the board wants to concur, is a thirty-seven forty, uh, to come out of Arpa funds.
A lot of Arpa fund, they're coming out of general fund. There's more, like apartments, like, uh, wastewater, water. Budget.
Where did we, where were we gonna take the forty from?
The original was from Arpa, that's why it's.
Yeah. Oh, so then it'll, okay.
And we still have some undesigned, uh, the funds.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I agree, Mr. Gerke, of the party, that, you know, we need to be more diligent and not let these mistakes happen. It's a but I don't see the alternative at this point.
It was a good put it back up for Octon and make a little bit more money out of that.
This one time, we'll make a motion to approve additional funds. Used, uh, Arpa, Arpa funds.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other comments? Now, this doesn't have to be unanimous. If you feel one way or the other, please vote that way, so we can gauge that. Um, I will call a question. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed?
Name.
Okay, we have one name?
I have a name too.
We have two names, okay. Any more? All right, I will declare the motion passed with two names. And, uh, okay, we'll move on. Uh, motion approved the fifth amended agreement for the operation of Midbury Municipal Court. Did we have another municipality jump in there, or is this?
Just your renewal.
Yeah, yeah, there was at least one that I noticed that was. Uh, this is our municipal court that allows us to get forfeitures instead of having a kind, gobble it all up, play the use of it. And the, uh, Marshall's report, where it has the dollar amounts that we get annually, uh, they come from the municipal court, our court. Yeah, Big Cedar Lake PRD, is that? Is that a separate municipality? It's, uh, an event.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
It's their own governing body, so they, and they issue their own citations there, so they need to be able to have a court to.
Oh, okay. So they're not, they didn't get gobbled up when Burton went in?
Well, they're still within a municipality, but they do their own, um, tickening no longer.
All right. So we are in order to, uh, either, who are we, do you know?
I think a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we are, we have motion and second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Uh, motion to approve Brandon Hynan to attend groundwater supply and distribution certification in Green Bay for a cost of forty-seven, four seventy-two thirty-five plus lodging meals and mileage.
Can we set up per diem amount?
Did we ever get that completed? I know we were. Yeah, we talked about that extensively on the board one night, and I don't think we got to a final resolution of that. I think it's a good idea to have.
Well, the government produces the per diem.
Can do government.
Based on what municipality you're going to for the per diem.
Yeah.
You probably use those charts too, don't you, when you go on, private sites?
Yeah, I guess typically, in my experience, I'm logging stuff, it's, you, forever, whatever the reasonable rate would be.
And in Green Bay, yeah, right.
They change depending on where you are in country or the state.
Yeah.
Oh, we've talked about this for four years, and we've never come to a consensus on what that should be. Every time somebody goes to a conference, anything like that, it's always a discussion. We need some sort of.
Well, do they tell of a hundred and twenty-five, and, you know, if you spend eighty bucks on meals?
I don't know if I could spend that much, but, yeah. Um, do they have a block of rooms? Are you familiar if they have a block of room reserved or something like this? Generally, you order one of those block rooms. And.
Well, can we just find that briefbook and base it on that?
There you can refer to.
Oh, oh, we can find it.
Is there a lunch, uh, provided for this?
No.
No lunch?
Well, this is, um.
Last time I thought we did this, trying to reach way back here, but we did, we paid for the lodging. We talked about using for mileage, like a village vehicle, is what we talked about for him. Last time we, this became a contentious point was fifty dollars a day for meals.
Yeah, and this was, this was some time ago too, but, um, I would, I, I guess I'd be more inclined to have our administration book lodging and then give a per diem for meals, so, let's call it seventy-five dollars, not to exceed seventy-five dollars a day and mileage.
Y'all heard that, right? Not to exceed seventy-five? Sorry, I had to make a joke.
Yeah. Was it fifty-five cents or sixty-five cents a, a mile was?
There's a federal figure and a state figure. So the per diem for, um, anything outside of Appleton for January twenty-three is ninety-eight dollars per day for meals and incidentals. That includes, uh, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and pushes them all state travel.
I've got almost the same thing up there.
It's on the GSA website.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
Then, then there's the standard, that's what we have.
Well, that's only the only thing that we have, right, that has any logic and study behind it, so. It's, uh, I would even go on with that.
That, that does not include lodging. It's meals and incidents.
Yeah.
I'm good with those. Bones, I'll make a motion.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Did you get, uh?
So is, is the per diem then ninety-eight dollars or something like that?
Maybe ninety-eight.
And then the lodging will be whatever they set up for the, uh.
And then also.
Event. And then, um, do we have a vehicle? Do you send them in the car? Or would they rather, uh, with Brandon, would you rather go in the pickup or car or something?
I mentioned it to the Moza, or, and the Scott brought off it. It's okay, but you guys have this plan on bringing the person check.
Mm-hmm.
Give you a mileage.
And we wanna go with like the federal mileage? It is a federal mileage, no? It's probably gonna knock it over, but. No, we should have to get all these appropriate things in the minutes, and then we won't say, well, now, what did we do with that?
Would encourage our administration to, uh, set some precedence to travel expenses.
So the, the IRS, the IRS for the remainder of twenty-two has said that business travel rate is sixty-two point five cents a mile.
Fifty-two or sixty?
Sixty-two point.
Sixty-two five, okay.
It does not say anything about twenty-twenty-three.
Did you say like twice a year? No, they, they used to just do it once a year.
I think that's a good, I mean.
There's a final six months on the year, so.
You want to go out to see a movie or have a cocktail or something like that.
You should take his wallet and then if you want to do those kind of things. Okay, so you have ninety-eight cents?
Ninety-eight dollars.
Or ninety-eight?
Point five for mileage, I hope you go tell.
Okay. And he'll take his truck. Right. So everybody stands ready to go?
Yes, that's mileage to a problem, not necessarily toward, uh.
You can Google, yeah, you can Google.
And trust, trust me, clarity, I heard your feedback that as I update the personal, personnel policy that we can, uh, update those stuff too.
All righty, um, if there's no other discussion, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 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 opposed, motion carried. So now we finally have, uh, a good, uh, structure of what we can do from now on. We can see if we can set up a policy somehow, I think.
We'll, we'll get there.
I just want to keep you in business, though. So you don't sit there with nuts and feel bad.
Oh, I definitely won't.
All right, okay, next on the agenda, we have, uh, uh, convening in a closed session to. We're nineteen point eighty-five, stub one, sub C. So. Okay, I will. Bill, Bill's, uh, motion. Yes, that, I said, okay, I will start with Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carried unanimously. We are in close session. I don't know, anybody want to run out there again? Or, uh, should we put it in a?
Thank you.
Do later. Do later, Kurt.
I will, I'll thank you tomorrow. Oh, yeah. So, um, I think we're not sending. I'm trying to find whatever we have currently on the TID. So we can look at that. I have two, one developer agreements that has some contentious language that revolves around what we're going to enter, what we're going to enter.
All right, any other item? If not, we are in order. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye. There's been a motion.
All right.